Well.
Yeah.
When we were messing with it the other day, it took a while.
Oh, okay.
We need to update Amy's like admin account for the Zoom to like be like our town logo or something. And like I've changed it so it's a South Berwick council chambers instead of Amy.
Oh, yes. A gear.
A gear, okay. Instead of saying Amy, it says that but it's her face.
Okay.
Um, but it's set up to automatically pull people in. So we don't have to mess with like getting texts in the middle of a meeting or so and so.
It's saying Keegan, it looks like whoever's speaking.
Yeah, I know. It's like panoramic. And we might have a little bit of like adjusting at some point to to kind of do with the location of it. But I think it seems to be working. It's getting everybody in there. Yeah. And I tested it with my daughter the other day and I sat in the very back row and I spoke really, really quietly and she could hear me, so.
And did the the camera follow the person? So we have a speaker. We'll just we'll have to identify a spot for them.
Well, no, I mean, like if I sit here and I talk for long enough, it'll come and find me.
Nice.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so come forward a little bit.
Like it'll find, it'll follow me.
It'll follow wherever. To your right.
Am I right?
What?
Yeah, take a little step to the right.
It's like a fun game. Yeah. I don't know why I keep, I think it, I don't know why it's staying stuck on my spot right now. I think it's because I'm like doing a lot of talking and that's where, and there was a lot of talking happening from over there.
It's backwards, you know, relative to the.
Yeah.
We see looking at you, it's it's flipped.
Yeah.
And Keegan, is that what it looked like when you were?
Yep. Well, there's one in the middle where you can see Jack.
Okay. Yeah, the, so the bottom section will will split, will expand and split kind of depending on what's happening.
Okay.
And how many people are speaking and stuff. But the top should stay the same.
Yeah, and then I saw all those squares and then I could see Keegan as well.
Nice.
Obviously one said that, yeah.
So let's compute the time, say.
Six twenty seven.
And I sent the assessment. Yeah, it's a summary.
He's got a whole big write-up in the person.
Yeah.
Oh, the first few pages, is that?
The first.
It's actually the first page.
Oh, executive summary. Gotcha, gotcha.
Basically, everything needs to be updated.
Well. Critical problem, who gets there?
I have, oh, no, six twenty nine. It'd be sad if no one else joins with our new fancy camera.
Right?
I know.
It's okay.
I have been asked if unless Jen, you got something, the best way to update the council. That's just for comments. I said to email us. Did I didn't get anything?
I do not. Okay.
Time has come today. We'll convene the workshop. We we scheduled this workshop a couple of months ago, actually, and we're trying to get a handle on what we need to do to bring our comprehensive plan up into two thousand twenty one. Back in April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty, we got some information back from Southern Maine Regional Planning and Development Commission. They were charged with going through the implementation strategies and providing some recommendations with respect to where we need to be. Our current comprehensive plan was completed, submitted to State Planning Ops in March two thousand and six. It was brought to the then Town Council and they approved it on May twelfth, two thousand and eight. We call this for sake of we call it two thousand and seven comprehensive plan. There was a fits and starts to get the whole thing approved. It was actually approved piece new. And that was put together in compliance with the Growth Management Act. It'll be referenced as GMA in two thousand and seven. And that growth management act is thirty A M R S A subsection four, three, one, two dash through forty three fifty. And and we're consistent with the goals of the act as it occurred at that time. And we need to do some work in order to bring it up into compliance. Actually, two thousand twenty one is is a good milestone for South Berwick because we have the results back from the two thousand twenty census. And that'll really, really help us with the community profile, economy, housing, transportation, public facilities. And then we can also check out what's going on with respect to natural resources. Perhaps the maps, our our comprehensive plan from two thousand and seven, the mapping was based on beginning with Habitat. And that map series, so we can, you know, check with those folks to see if there's any updates to the the various maps that are included in the plan. I'll I'll give you the final paragraph in Paul's executive summary by Paul Schumacher. This document examines the items that need to be updated in the town's two thousand and seven comprehensive plan and how the town could go about finding, updating, and presenting such information. Is based on the current plan, meeting the requirements for the GMA, and only needing updated data and figures to be found consistent with the GMA now. I think what I'd like to do at this time is to perhaps go around the room and see what the other councils had to say, or the management might want to say at this particular point in time as an introduction. Valerie, do you have anything?
Um, nothing specific at this point, no, other than I just appreciate Paul's thoroughness with this and I kind of trust that he's an expert on this. And if we need to update things, we need to update things.
Abby.
Um, I think that this plan could actually be a useful tool that we utilize to shape the direction and future of our town. Um, so I'm very glad that we're meeting today and I look forward to working, working on this further. Um, I'm looking at this in particular based on some community feedback from a lens of our downtown safety and pedestrian safety lens. Um, meeting that challenge of creating a a safe downtown walking space that will help business um, and families to thrive more and and really use that downtown to the best of its, you know, capability. And the only way we can really do that is by slowing traffic. Um, shortening the cross, crosswalks, having fewer crosswalks. Paul suggested updating our parking guide and even suggested speed humps just as a, as a few. I've also been asked to look at particularly land use and the issue of solar farms. Some other towns and states are looking at this. New York actually has the whole state as a moratorium on new solar projects, just so they can have some time to assess it. The state had planned on creating a commission to study the impact on municipalities and solar farms in Maine. That did not go through. Um, so it's likely something that they're going to continue to talk about when session starts up. Again, but I've been asked to have us just consider, and as an environmentalist, I never thought I would think that we would have to think about this, but we really do. Too much of a good thing can be a bad thing. So I want us just with very open minds to start thinking about, you know, size of the solar farm, location of the solar farm. Be mindful that other towns are starting to consider moratoriums. And it's all because of the the tax base and that we don't want the municipality to face a burden with mounting property valuations. So just throwing that out there. Jack, thank you for including in that email today the citizen survey that went out. That's referenced many times in Paul's summary analysis. And I've already started looking at that document and thinking about how it could be tweaked or new questions that can be added. It's a very nice way to survey the town as a start. I think that would be a great way to start this this process, along with reforming a committee to work intensively on the comprehensive plan itself.
Can I ask a question? Survey, how was the survey in two thousand and sixty, two thousand and seven, or the last one?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and twenty. How was that administered?
We had a planning consultant. We had MRI in the remember his name, doesn't matter, but he ended up being the town manager of of Littleton, New Hampshire. And at that time, he was a you know, a worker, whatever you want to call it, for M M I, Missful Resource Incorporated. They provide personnel for various tasks and in planning background and all the rest of he helped facilitate both the it's actually shown in the document as well. There was a like a a visioning session that we held upstairs.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's kind of like a diet design sure process where people got together. You didn't just. Well, he thought that was it. And of course, we've been through this before. And he thought that was going to form the basis of, you know, drawing conclusions and making decisions on the plan. But everybody who was there had been through it in nineteen eighty nine. And we got another survey at that point in time. And on both surveys, one was like a five percent response rate. The other was twenty percent.
Were they mailed out?
Yes.
Okay.
And they weren't just property owners, it was residents. So we got the full, full scope. And through that process, we found out that in, you know, not being a surveyor, that kind of a surveyor. But we found out that when you have a target survey like that, if you have a six percent response rate, it's statistically valid to go ahead with those conclusions.
Yep.
That was like a big deal. It's a wow, we got, we got a crate, you know, five times or six times the minimum.
Was that, was that widely accepted by the town? Like a, like a lower response rate, like why they accepted from results that were interesting? Back to the sort of pushback that's occurred with the marijuana survey that we didn't have enough. Enough response.
I think, I think on the marijuana survey, if I can, you know, my reading between the lines was that was a, an opportunity to challenge results based on statistics and and in format. And it it allowed someone to, you know, get some screen time with the council to talk about what may have been wrong with that. But we were fine. People were saying, and so I don't want to go too long before you get the chance to talk. But anyway, that's, that's what that was. So so in both times, I think in eighty nine, we had been tomorrow. And then we had MRI helping facilitate that. And notwithstanding your comments, Abby, but I really believe that we need more of a foundation to start off with.
Yeah.
Uh, and like get, get all of our data in line. That's the big piece of it. And then we can, you know, bring it out and start talking specifics about this or that, you know, for example, you know, we're going to talk about life. If we applied properties in town, we can't do anything about it. Well, I guess we can, but it's it's difficult. Is it?
Yeah.
If you have the, you have the force of the plan and then running audits is based on that, then you can address it. And because that definitely affects property values.
Yeah.
And in fact, neighborhoods, and you can get a creep through a neighborhood, you know, that that's, you know, windows start going out and windows, you know, roads start flooding and it start leaking. So how do you like living next door to that?
There's environmental impacts to that as well.
Yeah, so. That's where I'm coming from.
I.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. I'm just really excited to want to get a lot of the information, especially demographics, like how many kids are in school and how many houses. I think it'd be can be really good to get a better snapshot of our town and better inform us in decision making in the future. So this is definitely a long time gone, but I think it's good. It doesn't back when I was in elementary school. So it'll be good to update it for sure.
Yeah, well, again, it's we have a functioning document.
Yeah.
And it needs to be updated. So we'll do the best we can with that. And I think it's actually probably a pretty good time because we're not being mandated by the state to do so. But, you know, with the mandate came money. So we're going to have to put a little money because I definitely believe professional health is required.
Oh, sure.
Particularly on those things that I mentioned before, you know, the clearly profiles, the economics. Houses and all that. That's a, that's all specialty things. And so while we do a great deal with with Southern Maine, I think we also perhaps might be better served if we sent out an RFQ. Start off as qualifications and then see who might, who might come up. Southern Maine would be the top there, their qualification statement as well. But then at that point in time, once you get the RFQ done, you see who's the, who the candidates are. At that point in time, that person could help us actually, the RFP. But and again, that's just part of the process of, of our, so. And and it could be tailored to what our particular needs are.
Jer, we've had a a planner before. Would this be the space to talk about?
What, what do you want?
We've had a town planner before.
That was Paul.
Yeah, right. Is this a space to talk about whether adding that position?
I, I don't think so. I don't think so. That, I, I think we're well-served by, by having a responsive consultant who is, you know, dealing with the planning board and 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 doing ad hoc tasks. And we're actually uh, I think we're doing quite well rather than having that as a, as a full-time position.
Okay.
That actually, when, when we did have a town planner, there, there was a real big development board. Your neighborhood. They're all over town, your neighborhood. And all over town. And so we really needed someone on board because it was like all day, every day, all day, every day. You know, our planning would be going to the, and just just trying to get through the stuff because we ran our business the same way as we do now. We, it all happens right here. So it's just, it's hard to get through it. And we wanted to do it right. So at that time, it was warranted, but what the reason we got away, it actually ended up, we actually had a town planner again in the early two thousands. But again, it wasn't the workload to justify the position. So we eliminated the position. And that, that's just the way, way of it now. So, yeah, it's something we can consider.
Okay.
Uh, but I think that we just bring it on an ad hoc basis, they, they do the task and feel free.
Okay.
Yeah. Started off in the introduction by going through and looking at, thinking about the two thousand twenty census. And that's okay. Now we have to integrate tables, text, and all the rest. And we can't get maybe listen to my email to you folks today. I mean, there's the section A economy, yeah, community profile, B economy, C housing, D transportation. Different type of consulting, but still one that's natural resources. And then coordination of current information regarding section E, public facilities. We're in just a zone particularly not to crack. Because it's, 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 it's different than the more general kind of thing. I think that's where we would get into taking a look at what might be on the horizon. As, you know, like you said, you mentioned solar farms are, are dealing with that sort of business. And there's going to be pros and cons on that. So in terms of the best way to proceed this evening, I'm completely open as far as what, what people might want to talk about. I, I really, I really stress the fact that they really need we really need help because we don't have it onboard.
Yeah. Process-wise, would we put out the RFQ in, in the near future, or would we think about forming a a comp plan steering committee first and solicit who's interested in that endeavor?
Well, this plan concentrated that and kind of people always criticize comprehensive plans because they get done, they go on a shelf and no one ever looks at them again. And and that, that's, that's a fair criticism. But we there was a
Steering Committee.
Steering Committee was actually the committee you're talking about. That was a five, five citizens that, 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 that formed that steering committee. Then there was subcommittees. And you can see in the document how those are populated as well.
And then the update committee that was supposed to keep it, that living, creating document that we use.
Right, right. That's, that's what I was just looking for here.
And what were the, was the steering committee born after the survey was administered?
No, no, the town council, who was, who was established need. So the, the council said, all right, do, you know, form a planning board members on it and other, other people who had been involved in, in the government. And so that, that committee was appointed. And then that committee went about recommending and populating committees, like there was a downtown committee, there was a historic and cultural resources committee. There was, you know, each, they're all listed here.
Public facilities, natural resources, land use, cultural. But did that committee participate in like the creation and the development of the survey, or did the survey happen before the committee, that initial steering committee?
That's process-wise, what I was trying to get at. What comes first?
Yeah, like so chicken or the egg?
Survey was early days.
Was before the committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
The steering committee was there.
Yes.
For talking about things. And so the consultant was onboard. And then we put together the, I don't know, the visioning, visioning session was held before, after. I though, I would think the steering committee would have been in place prior to the vision.
Yeah.
It's, it's just would have been assault with a bunch of citizens.
Yeah.
So there's some, some push with, by, by average committee. And then I remember speaking with Justin and Jason. And because he, again, thought he was done. This is what, no. Want to get, we want to cast a big net, we want to find people. So and, and I like it. I like the process that way because when you move ahead with a recommendation, you have that in your back pocket, say, you know, when, when public safety comes through as the number one, number one, well, that makes sense. Why do people pay taxes? We pay the tax for protection. And so, you know, bleeds fire. And then why, why, why else do we pay taxes? Well, we want good schools. And so it's not surprising. And I, I would think that having been through it a couple of times, that, that the number one priorities are, that would be established by the public, by the respondents. And I don't think they're going to change because that's just pretty, pretty much what it is. Then you're going to get tweeners that you know, like like, you know, open space was a big one. Or there was a big response for the two thousand and three survey. And, and we've done a great job over that time and before that. Uh, because, you know, some, what I don't realize is that one-sixth of the land in South Berwick is in conservation. So that's a big, that's a big chunk. And, and so the, basically people supporting that sort of thing, not necessarily through town government, but through their own donations and own interest, whether it's the land trust or me and Co-Seritage Trust or other kinds of things like that that go on with it. Um, so yeah. I, I would not mind seeing us do another survey.
Okay. Yeah, I think I, I think another survey, I think a lot has likely, has just changed like in the world since two thousand and three. And that's been almost twenty years.
Right.
I think South Berwick has changed a lot in that period of time, too, just grow, like, not that I can say from experience, but just growth and new mindsets and stuff. I think it would be good to, to kind of start with a base, baseline of a new survey. So it sounds like, Jack, in order to sort of like, from like a next step standpoint, the RFQ request for qualifications would be a sort of polling consultant firms, whatever, to, to help us facilitate that survey.
Correct.
Um, and so then the next step would really be putting together the RFQ. Um, but I would think we could sort of like in parallel, or, or, you know, kind of next to that process, start thinking about forming that steering committee. You know, those two, two things aren't necessarily dependent upon each other, but.
If, if we have our act pretty tight as to what we want, like we're, we're going to, you know, see what we can do to, to make sure we're in compliance with the current growth management.
Yeah.
Requirements. Well, that's a, a good metric for someone to respond to. The survey is a good metric.
Yeah.
Uh, so if we have our, our act together, we don't necessarily have to do the RFQ. We can go right, if we can write our own RFP, then we do it.
Yeah.
Then we just get the polls back.
And it was, it was written, so it was quantitative. So it was really easy to capture the averages and look at that data. It's, it's not a complicated process. And since we already have one that's written up, it would be really easy to amend and add to.
Yeah. Actually, in the two thousand and six version, I was looking through that, I actually forgot that we updated the tabulation in January of two thousand and six, which tweaked the numbers a little bit, but that gave the actual individual responses by number. Not just, you know, if you play around percentages and sometimes it gets a little bit vague, but when you actually see the numbers of people who responded as a number one priority, it, it carries more weight.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would think we could use the two thousand and three survey, what was sent out at that point as like a, a starting point and then tweak and modify and add and stuff from there. I'm really curious about how a survey like this would be administered today. You know, I know it was sent via mail. The response rate was low. I'd be curious if there was any way to be able to do any kind of like online survey or anything. I'd be curious if there was any way to be able to do any kind of like online survey or anything like. Yeah, I, I don't have any like feed, like preference on that. It's more just me being nerdy and curious. It's still like.
If you can go on our website.
They got online, yeah, successful. Just, I'm more like doing something that's on my own, so.
Yeah, I think it's like the, the like. Validation or like, you know, how do you. How do you account for like, if there's two adults in my house, like, could have third person potentially. Like, do, do you know what I mean? Like, kind of validating your identity, identification or your residency or whatever. Cause that's the population that we're likely to capture. Like, I don't know how that would work. I mean, I wouldn't think anybody would be terribly motivated to. Submit a bunch of like fake responses to a comprehensive survey.
There could be a, a form where you had to put your address in to get access and I know.
Yeah, I would.
On the paper copy they sent out, they allowed multiple people in the household to take the survey, but they asked that the next person put in a different color. So that's how they did it with the written one that went, that was mailed out. And I would wanna mail out anything in addition to having it online.
I wonder if there's a way to track, like, we, so they put in their address. So if, if there's a way to find out how many people are at that address and if we get more surveys than the amount of addresses, we'd get. A mid one or something like that. I'm not sure how it would work, but that could be possible too.
Yeah, yeah, I would lean on.
Kind of why we pay the money.
Exactly. Yeah, I would lean on them to say, to kind of guide us when, yeah, what is the best way to do this? And if that's still doing it via mail, fine.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't wanna isolate or, or make anyone feel. There are a lot of people that just don't do online.
That's true.
Exactly. I think our population here too is gonna capture a lot of that as well. They're not interested in Facebook or websites. Yeah, so I wanna make sure that it's the most broad reach as possible to get as much feedback. So Jack, I'm, I was a little bit, I'll be totally honest, the whole like RFP, RFQ process is not anything that I'm terribly familiar with. So like, what is, you said like if we have our stuff together, we wouldn't have to do the RFQ, like. What, what, what is then an RFQ?
Well, if you don't really know what you want. That consultant can help you formulate that. It's, it's, it's getting this big funnel down to here.
Okay, but if we're already here.
If you, but if you're already down there and like, we, we could have a, I think a targeted task would be to go through the document. And update all the demographic data and, and create the tables and do all those sorts of things that are, that are kind of. Grind it up, kind of work.
Yeah.
And, and, but that would bring all that information up to date. To the current census and I think that would be a terrific tool.
Yeah.
Moving ahead and so that's like, you know, another thing we could, you know, so you list out the, the, the gotta haves. And then they can respond accordingly.
And one of the gotta haves would be, be administering of the survey.
I think so, yes.
Yeah, okay. So it's like we're, we're, we're looking to ideally find one organization, one individual, one. Firm, whatever we're gonna, whatever's gonna be that's gonna sort of do the survey, update the census stuff and kind of take this whole thing home. Right?
I think so.
Yeah.
And then. I'm, I'm looking at kind of a tertiary step as to. Then we start getting into. Things that we didn't think about before. The world changes, you were. Solar farms.
Yeah.
You know, we would think that all the bonds and all the silos have fallen down and, and solar farms have taken their place. That's just the reality.
Yep.
It is. So that's a, that's a piece that's clearly missing and so, you know, we could state some goals and strategies towards that particular land use. And you know, you, when you. There was some, some conversation on the planning board where, you know, it was a good question, you know, it's okay, you have the change of land use. But then you have the increase of valuation as a result of. Infrastructure improvements. So, so the, you know, the basically the income from taxation goes up. That's, that's now a. Minimize effect, I like. Sorry, everybody, but it's, it's more than it, it's more than, than, than the taxable assessment of a H1.
Yeah.
And so it's.
So the next.
It's a coming thing.
So the next step really isn't RFP. I don't know anything about.
Tell you how you can solve it.
No, 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 I know what it is in terms of like doing it. I don't know. Like about pulling that together. Yeah.
A lot of other towns are willing to share their RFPs for certain things.
My ruin, that's a real.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, and. And, you know, they, so the main might, might, might be interested in, you know, the, the, so. We, it's always good to see who's out there, you know.
Yeah.
Like an all star. You might get a cover, you know.
Yeah. And so this is not something that necessarily, at least in the shorter term, besides putting together an RFP and kind of making the decision. Is not gonna become a huge time commitment for the council in the short term. It's more like just some things that we kind of need to. Moving, right?
My, my view is the council works best as an executive board. And we do a policy and all that sort of thing and then we. Of course, there's special ad hoc things like, you know, the safety committee, that sort of things that we, we, we might jump in on, whatever. But typically, you know, we're gonna seek to recruit and, and delegate.
Yeah, yeah. And so what I, so I started just asking that because, I mean, I know we have a good amount on our plate right now with marijuana. And the town manager search and stuff, but from talking through this, this doesn't seem like something that we necessarily have to table right now. Because the, the, the time and work required for us in the shorter term isn't a ton. I agree. I'd like to agree too. Like to be able to continue working for.
It seems immediately, it's a, it's a C priority as far as I can see, it's not an A priority.
Agreed.
You know, it's in that big list, you know, but, but it'll, it'll come around, it could be, it could be. And I think with the budget we have, we set aside five grand.
Yes, and we have a three five grid in New York.
Okay, so that's gonna get us going.
Yeah.
And we could, we can, we can. Start that planning process with that money and, and have a move ahead.
Jack, do you have any recollection about how long it took from discussion to survey going out? Is that like a couple of months project? Was that a six month return? I know this is going to take me back a while.
No, it's, it's, it was, it was, it got very, very long.
Yeah.
We didn't have great support for our work and, and so it, it took a long time.
For the survey process?
It's a real thing, you know, it started.
The two thousand three survey and the two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
January two thousand three, a vision meeting was held in town hall, a hundred people showed up. Yeah, that's why Jason thought it was all done. And that's typically what they do and they, they. They'll kind of.
Rushed it.
Well, it's not rushed, but it's like, okay, we have these general things now that people told us about and they can kind of. Get right down to the quick and. We wanted more.
Yeah.
It's just a different way of walking and, 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 and so. You know, we increased his budget because he wasn't anticipating that sort of thing. So it was just. Of course. You know, getting, going back twenty years, it seems as though that. They do these things kind of formulaically and, and, but we, it was only twelve years since we did the last. That was a lot quicker. We started like two thousand, I mean, eighty eight, eighty nine, we're done by, by ninety one. Done and done. So it was a lot quicker, but this kind of stretched out there for. Two thousand three to two thousand, final, final. This, this, this book here is my just draft.
Yeah.
There's a draft for a long, long time and so what really should have been done by two thousand five, two thousand six. Got blocked. For other reasons and.
This is tedious and it's really hard to get by and, and, you know, I'm willing to really promote this and. I think, once we get an active committee going and.
I don't know what was going on between the state planning office, when there was a state planning office at the time and the town planner in town here. But I think there was some of this going on and it was. Seemed like we wanted to get over it, you know, eagles dance on the head of a pin, kind of, okay, that's great. We resolved that, but still have just this little thing and so it could just, it can happen. It can just, it can just get prolonged. You kind of say, okay, what we know at nine thirty, doesn't matter. It's ten after seven, now we know the things.
Right.
So you keep moving on and.
I, and just reading over the assessment that Paul had done, some things that stood out. Just with how things have changed in the thirteen years or whatever calculation I'm gonna put on that. Just the amount of, just in this past year with remote working, I'm so curious to find out, you know, what percentage now. We have all the data here from what towns people work in primarily and what companies are the main companies. With Paul recommending the, you know, product Whitney, but now I'm just wondering, you know, what is the percentage of folks working remotely? That are coming here or have moved here because their work location isn't tied to. This geographical area. That just makes it look a lot different, you know, the potential for this town and, and the community that we're serving right now.
That's, that's why high speed internet, blazingly fast.
Right.
Not what we're experiencing right now, not four up, a hundred down.
Yeah.
We're talking like a hundred, hundred, two hundred, two hundred, you know, real, you know, real, real fast stuff.
Opens us up to really anywhere.
If you want economic development two thousand, two thousand twenties.
Yeah.
Blazingly fast, fiber optic based, high speed internet.
Absolutely.
Access to an interstate highway.
Yeah.
Check. Access to an airport, check. One thing we're truly missing is, is that high speed internet. For various.
Yeah.
Cause, cause the companies will always say, you know, what their download speed is. Well, that's great for playing games. But if you're making a product and you wanna send it out to some. You know.
Right.
You know, gazillions of bytes, that's what the upload speed is. And they never talk about it. If you look at all the ads, next time you could look at it. At, at internet ads, it's always downloads.
So just, just that component, you were asked to really consider about what citizens want and desire from our downtown. How we define our downtown and then the question of seasonal living. I'm really curious about that, how many people, that's my. Seasonal living?
Seasonal living.
Yeah, when I read that, I don't see that a lot here. I don't, I don't, maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see what would be seasonal.
I ran into a couple of odd fellows, you know, the other night. They were just freshly back from Florida and.
Like snowbirds or?
Yeah.
Yep.
So that, combination with the being able to work wherever. I, I wonder how that's impacted us in thirteen years. So. Um, so Mallory was asking about the RFQ and the process. Jen, you had said you could ask some other towns for what they sent out.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Anything else from us that could make this go quick and smooth and easy?
Very familiar with those, those kind of documents, those.
Yeah. I'm just, this is exciting. I'm really glad that we're doing this and that we can make this document. I'd love to make it a living document. That's my goal, that we can actually use this as a tool, planning tool.
And I know in the planning board meetings that there's been a lot of people that brought it up.
Yeah.
There's a difference from media ordinance versus their, you know, comprehensive plan.
Yes. Yeah.
Huge difference.
Yeah, yeah.
And it is a misunderstanding about.
Which is, yeah.
You know, that, that's sort of generally speaking and. The. You know, it's, it's kind of like the Declaration of Independence and when you really look at it and really read it. It's not reflective of what, what's going on even now. You know, it's an aspirational document and this is kind of aspirational. You know, this is like, it'd be great if we could have this and it'd be great if all people were created equal.
It'd be great if we could have a conference of the plan process for federal government.
Hear that Sally?
Is it worth us trying to or talking to Paul to see what his take is on kind of. Next step, the, you know. Whether they can help us with this.
Sure, sure.
But to be ethical, do we need to put out an RFP slash Q?
I don't, I don't, I think, just banging it around here, I think we got enough points, so we really don't need the R. We're, we're obviously gonna need a qualified firm.
Yeah, yes.
So, but again, if. But the, if you have a qualified firm who specializes in these things and you don't really know, you know you wanna go in a general direction. It's like saying, okay, I'd really like to go to the seashore. Well, what do you want? You know, do you want Hampton Beach? Do you want Ford Foster? You know. Owl's Head? I mean, you know, this.
Yeah.
So they, they get focused on what part of that seashore you wanna go to. So that, that's what, that, that can help you with.
Okay.
So I really believe what's ahead of us here, the RFP part of the request proposals will streamline it.
Okay.
I think, and then we can change also, I mean, we can also add on, it's what they respond to, but then if we think of other things.
What's a, what's a good amount of time that we can expect a turnaround on? So just gonna put it out or draft it first and then.
It's, it's not a long time. It's, it's, you know, a, a month.
Yeah, okay.
You know, again, you want fresh responses. You don't wanna get them back and then wait six months to deal with them and things like that, so.
So we could try to draft this, get it out potentially by the end of the month. And then think about end of August.
I don't, no, I think that's too soon. I think that's too soon. We gotta switch around our priorities too. Cause with the comment that we heard at the last council meeting, we have our, we have our ordinance moratorium backwards.
Yeah.
Cause we, we have to deal with. The cultivation slash facilities ordinance first, as that becomes the new priority and I think we set aside time for storefronts. But actually we have more front of, more.
In the cultivation.
Yes, we, we have more time going to October for the.
Yeah, we have more time for the start.
So, thank you.
Could be given, I'm just trying to establish a timeline, just to move it. And I understand that we have different priorities to balance, but just to get a general idea of where we're going. Could we, could we get an RFP by the end of August?
That's more realistic.
I need a date. I'm the kind of person that need a date and, and if I don't have a date.
I agree with you, I agree with you. Without a deadline, nothing gets done.
Yeah, not to, you know.
Yeah, that's my.
Load you up. I just keep it moving. Okay. This too is really gonna nicely facilitate our work with getting a new manager.
Yeah.
If we're.
I think in that way myself.
If we're already moving the ball on this and, and already getting engaged with our community. It's gonna set them up for a nice, a nice smoother transition.
Yep.
Into a long tenure. Great.
Let's give this steering committee. Some thought to, in that same timeframe.
Of a, of a committee charge, perhaps, like drafting a committee charge?
Yeah, I think we, you know, get, get some responses from the RFP, then we can. Yeah, I think we, you know, get, get some responses from the RFP, then we can you know, follow that up with, uh, with populating a
Okay.
A steering committee.
One, okay. We have interviews for that or just?
I think we just, you know, throw it out there to see who's interested.
Could that be volunteers?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The community.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds like, you know, a plan for the short term.
Yeah, I'm excited. It's tedious work, but the data and statistics and the opportunity to engage the community, I think, are really well worth it. How are we going to reach out and ask people to volunteer? We've done it before on our website. We've posted on Facebook.
We could send it out through like the listserv. The email thing that goes to all users or whatever.
Is that, yeah.
So there was, you know, just thinking about historical and archaeological. I have a note down to over service.
Yeah.
Downtown committee, you know, we had a nice blend of, uh, who was on that, but there was a nice blend of property owners, business owners and citizens. Is that, that's representative of our downtown is the it's really a mixed use zone.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the reasons that it's so nice is that it is mixed use. It's not just commercial residential over here. You have the mix of both.
Yeah.
And
Bigger mix, the better.
Yeah, yeah. And
Yeah, we were asked to update, like, and I didn't even know this, that we had a working list of all of our historical inventory of historical resources and how to protect them. That was in the historic and archaeological resources section.
Well, there's actually some historic sites that were not mentioned. Because people didn't want to say where they worked.
Oh.
Yeah.
Because they didn't want to have more visitors?
Rockhounds, you know, people looking for digging and artifacts and things like that. So that was, that was mentioned.
Yeah.
It's kind of interesting. We know where they are, but I can see.
Right. So we'll, we'll get a gentle poll, whoever, from other towns to get just like a starting point. Jack's really familiar with this. I'm assuming at some point we'll talk about this on an upcoming council meeting where we can sort of kind of have our draft RFP and we can throw in extra things or, you know, whatever and have a little bit more of like a discussion in it. In the meeting to just refine that a little bit and then we can go ahead and send it out.
Yep. Even start soliciting, I can hear this counselor comments on Tuesday. Folks that are interested in this process, you know, to
Yeah, yeah. I think if we start talking about it at council meetings and stuff, then we can post on the website. Like, I think we can do some work around, like, getting the word out and yeah, I think we all, we know of some people that we think might be interested in it and ask them and stuff. So we'll, we'll find people, I'm sure.
Yeah, so the cultural committee, they were like art teachers.
Oh, God.
Came up back and downtown committee. Yeah, you know, folks, folks were, were around. Interested in downtown.
Jack, what about this process with the school board? How, because in the assessment, it talks a lot about and then also has assigned roles in the comp plan of who oversees it, is the town council, is the planning board, is it the school district? How did, how did that work in, in collaboration with the school with that?
I don't recall
Okay.
That at all. That, that was like, you know, kind of a separate obviously schools are important, but they, it wasn't, we weren't getting into the school business.
Right, right.
Because, because they have a whole set of priorities and established by you know, all the rabbit warrant of laws and rules that pertain to public schools.
Okay.
And we, I don't think we just, I think we just kind of didn't get into it because, and what we did have jurisdiction.
Right.
And
There were some questions in the survey about it, that's why.
It might be worth that. Is there, is there, do you have now the meetings with the school districts?
Have been attending.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I know the Brian's doctor over there.
Yeah, I, I don't know, like, it might, might just be worth just like asking, well, I don't know, will they even know what, how things? I'm just wondering, like, would it just be worth just like asking the question of like, do you guys have record and or was there any involvement in the conference plan? If there were school related questions, that's the only thing that I sort of wonder about. Or like, or perhaps like more of a partnership kind of thing of like we're planning to do this survey, right? Is there anything that the school district is looking to capture from this? You know?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I, I don't know, like, I'm just sort of thinking out loud.
When is the next, um, so it's usually last of the second Wednesday every month.
Okay.
It was in a Wednesday morning.
Yeah, it's always a Wednesday morning. Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like I must have missed one July, that must have been the vacation.
And just in in the executive summary for the two thousand and seven document in, uh, under public facilities, there's just one paragraph about the schools. Talks about Southburg Elliott, the total enrollment of twenty seven sixty one. District doesn't expect any new building projects in the next ten years, ten year projections of student population, it's a little change from the present, so. It's from a lot, but it's really
The purview of the
Well, but for us, it's the five thousand foot view.
Yes.
You know, we're like down there.
Right.
Hundred foot view.
Abby, are you talking about the question, like, just good school system, like, where to get?
Yeah, there were, I mean, there was just some in, just in the summary, it was just saying that as a suggestion and how much we were going to work with school district thirty five. They're, they're assigned a responsible party tab. I didn't know that how much of a part they had to do with the last round of this. Maybe that's a good question for us to bring up to one of those meetings.
Professional consultant.
Okay, that we
It's really, you know, not a jurisdiction.
Yeah, they make their own budget.
They do. No, they do, yeah.
And and there's, there's questions in there also about you know, general fill in the blank thing where people could comment on of what's, like, why do you enjoy living in Southborough or Circle? You know, school's a big one.
And the way of life was one, the quaint town was one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Deserving the small town character.
Yes.
Whatever that was phrased. That was
Small town atmosphere.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, um, that's a big deal here. Still is. I think it always makes, probably makes it great. People know each other.
Yeah.
So I, under the RFP, I had two thousand census, all right, integration. Uh, citizen survey. What was the third thing? There was, there was a third.
The solar.
What?
This is super specific, but the whole solar topic, solar panel topic.
That's later.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's almost like implementation, that's but this is just to get the, kind of, I think it's just getting the front end out of the way, which is a, a good task in itself. And then once we get all that done, then we can focus on particular specifics, instead of land uses.
But don't we, isn't this RFP to hire somebody to help us with the whole process? So we want to make sure we're including in that, like, an expectation that we might have of them, even if it's later down the line.
Well, we could, we could put in some text that says that what I'm thinking about is Joe Howery window right now, you know, the, the thing about the, these are unknown names. You know, these things you know, these things you don't know, but those.
Yeah, but I mean, I think we know for certain. We know that the land use stuff needs to be updated. We don't know the specifics
Right.
of how we need to update it, but that's a task that we're looking for this firm that we're going to hire to do for us. So I think like, just anything right now that we know, even though we don't know the specifics of it, we might as well include probably more than anything to hold us accountable to make sure that we do talk about land uses, make sure that gets that let's hope for like, like the firm.
I agree. And the first thing you listed was just updating all the tables and the data.
I said two, two thousand and twenty census integration.
Yeah, okay.
Survey, uh, the known unknowns, which is like, for example, EG and solar farms. I won't use, no, not those, but that's for me.
Steering committee.
Yes.
Steering committee.
Yeah.
But that won't be for the RFP.
Yeah.
But
That's right.
They will be working with the steering committee.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure the other day will come around.
Yeah, well, let's plan to have this as like an agenda topic and like probably mid-August. So just like review the draft.
I found two spots so far, just from looking where SAD thirty five is in there. And the one, it was talking about talking to talking to the schools about conservation and having that be a goal. And then the other one was okay, design school bus routes at times to provide maximum convenience for students and to maximize bus riding time. Consider adding buses and routes to achieve this objective to maximize riding time. Uh, oh, did I say that?
Put him on there as long as possible.
Power each way.
Yeah, that was under the transportation.
Definitely be good background of that in a conference, my best friend.
Really?
For middle school, I think, yeah, but like five.
Oh, that's me. The bus comes to our house for the middle school and high school. Well, I don't know what time now, but like back when my daughter was in school, she had to be out to the bus like six oh five.
So early, that's not bad.
I missed the bus so many times.
Oh, here's one, redesign access to central school to provide safer conditions for students who walk and bike to school. So a little bit of a overlap with transportation.
We got it.
You know what, you know what I mean? Like, so I know that
In the list, that would get it all.
They have their for
For ongoing, because we did it with the
Yeah.
parking lot of the vest.
Well, that one's got an asterisk next to it. So I'd have to go figure out what the asterisk.
So it's sort of like, it's, it's sort of touching on, there's some touch points, the partnership that, I mean, yeah, like every school meeting, there's inevitably well, at least, well, summertime probably not, but like during the school year and especially before COVID, there was always like a the traffic's not working in front of central school, like, you know, like that was, I think, I feel like almost like that partnership and that relationship that's been established between us and the school district is sort of like not checking that box in terms of like solving the problem, but like constantly working.
It's ongoing. Here it is in, uh, educate the schools to educate the public about facilities available for community use. And that status is a question mark. But we have our purview and we're very good about keeping them separate. The town council does the policy and then the school board. They handle school matters and we don't mix and mesh those. It's just a really good policy to have and maintain. But just being mindful that there's just a smidgen of overlap here and thinking down the road how we're going to communicate with the school.
If they had changed the start times for central school, and that made a big difference for the topic.
Yeah, yeah.
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 So that would be helpful.
Yeah. I think we can like work with the school district as
Yeah.
as needed through this meeting and
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just surprised to see the school district like listed specifically as like the responsible party.
Yeah.
There's a lot of good stuff.
All right, I feel like we have a plan.
Also?
Okay.
Okay.
Good, yeah.
Very exciting. We don't need to do any fancy ones, right? We had questions that I turned to the journal in here.
We're done, we're done.
Okay, same thing on to a lot of this reporting. Mark that we're done at seven thirty.